I appreciate that.
Okay, oh, let me get the cable. Okay. Yeah, yeah, he's on the, he's gonna speak on the internet, yeah. What's that? It's not much. This is two little bitty things. Two little bitty things, no money. Okay. It's 6:00 P.M. What's that? Greetings. This is our call to order. Notice was hereby given of the regular meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons for the city of Bastrop this Thursday, November 12, 2020, at 6:00 P.M. in the courtroom at City Hall. This is our call to order. We are going to observe a moment of silence. We have one of our council ladies, I mean, our only council lady, Ms. Moore, suffered a loss in her family, and our hearts have grieved with, with her and her family. And we definitely want to remember her, Robert, as we pray in a special way. We're lost for words. But we're gonna observe a moment of silence as we stand, and I'm gonna ask Councilman Shaw to lead us in prayer, and Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Prater to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before tonight, before everyone, and we just thank you for your wisdom. We thank you for all the love and care you do give us. And then during this time, we just pray for Angela and her family. Just lift them up, Lord. Pray you comfort them during this time of loss of loved ones. And Lord, we just pray for our meeting tonight, that everything go well, and that we would be able to discuss and, and improve and continue to work on the issues with the city and so forth. And Lord, we honor and praise you for all you do for us, and we love and congratulate.
Amen. Thank you. Councilman Prater?
The little pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Roll call, please, Ms. Goldman.
Mr. Shaw, here. Mr. Green, here. Ms. Moore, here. Mr. Prater, here. Mr. La, here. They're all present. We have a call.
This meeting is now in session. Do we have any announcements?
I do.
Okay.
I just wanna thank everybody for all the love and support they've shown me during the time, you know, the loss of my mother. Very appreciated. Especially my family, their kind hearts, so thank you.
Praise is God, yeah, amen. Do we have any other announcements? We, there was a question about FEMA earlier. We do have a meeting, a formal meeting with FEMA, Monday morning?
Yes.
At nine, 9:00 A.M., 9:00 A.M. And we have, we were able to get debris removal, category A debris removal, for Hurricane Laura. We're still trying to up our standing with Hurricane Delta because we know that Laura seemed to loosen every, compromise every tree in town. And we see in, in neighborhoods, Robert, where you live particularly, and they're all over town. The same lots that had oak trees down for Laura were the same lots that lost more trees when Delta came. And, and I have been talking with the governor's office on homeland security and, and a FEMA person, as well as our homeland security chief at the sheriff's department, James Mottis. We are making a case. We have debris removal, and that's gonna be a large part, it's gonna be a long process of, the first thing we wanna do is clear the temporary lot at, at the garment plant. We are not allowing any more debris to be taken there, and we wanna make that clear. We're gonna have a police department pretty vigilant about people coming over and, and bringing, you know, vegetation or anything to the garment plant. That, we're trying to close that, clear it, take everything out to the landfill. We have all of our permits, permit to stage there, and the permit to stage and burn at, at the landfill, south of the Humane Society. So we are removing debris there. We've been, we authorized weekend shifts to work on the weekend, to do nothing but haul, and we're gonna continue that process. That's, that's about it. We got other things, but we're gonna go on and, and go to the meeting. Are there any public comments?
Yep.
Yes, come on. State your name and address, please, for the record, Ms. Thompson.
Rose Thompson. What else?
Address.
120 Parkers. What else?
Talk.
Okay. Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
I, you started trying to put that tax on here, on giving the tax to us. We have nothing against our firefighters, but as a citizen in a taxpayer here.
Uh huh.
That, your administration did that. The public didn't do that to those.
What do you think, what do you think the tax is gonna cost you personally, Ms. Thompson?
Well, Mr. Cotton, whether it costs me or not, when I go into the store, I'm still gonna pay tax.
No, no, it's property, ma'am.
Mr. Cotton, when I go into the store, I'm still gonna be paying taxes. Where is the property?
Not this tax.
Mr. Cotton, my house worth more, it's over seventy some thousand dollars, okay?
That's fine.
Yours?
No.
Okay.
Probably not.
Anyway.
Of course, no, it's the city tax, and that doesn't come into tax exemption, so the exemption doesn't, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Good, it's stopping people from talking. Anyway, we have nothing against the firefighters. We want them to get their money. But all this started way back up on the Hawkins, and no other was, was trying to pay those, those firefighters. We want them, but why you gonna put the burden on us? That's what y'all mistake that y'all made.
For y'all?
You, ain't you the mayor, ain't you?
No, that, we corrected.
It got started back from Clarence Hawkins. I don't know when it started.
But the first day I became mayor, we corrected the pay. The pay was wrong.
Yeah, but you still got to pay, though, Mr. Cotton. You still was ordered to pay them more money.
We owe them. The city owes them.
The city owed them, but we don't.
Well, that's fine.
And I'm part of the city, but you all.
Well, Mr. Bowles is gonna address the amount of the tax. We did lower it. I asked for three mills. We cut it less than in half. We compromised with, and we've had meetings with business community. The bulk of the tax is gonna be paid by.
But you talk with the business community?
Yes, I did.
And they, they agreed to it?
The ones I met with, yes, ma'am.
The ones I talked to said no.
Who'd you talk with?
Who you talked to?
Well, I went to, I went to Simmons Sporting Goods with Robert.
Well, Simmons ain't the only one in, in town. Go ahead.
You asked me who I talked?
Okay, tell me, and I'll tell you who I talked to.
This business is the most severely affected because, as far as local now, they, let me explain something, Dee.
No, no, just tell me who you talked to. Don't go all into that. And I'm gonna tell you.
Look, wait a minute. We asked that they communicate with the business community. We had, I went to the business, that's gonna be, as far as volume of dollars.
Uh huh.
As far as what their business is worth on the tax rolls. Independent business. Now, hold it. You see, we're talking about one point some bills, and I'm not gonna get into that too much because Mr. Bowles is here, and he's our attorney, he's our bond attorney. But we have to pay the firemen because it's affecting our credit. It's affecting our credit rating. It's affecting everything that we do. We can't borrow the money that we once could, and that may be one of the reasons, Ms. Thompson. You should research that. So it has an adverse effect on us paying a higher, possibly paying a higher interest rate on money we borrow. Just like your credit score. If you got an eight hundred or an eight thirty, you go to the bank to get a card, they're gonna say, oh, here's your interest rate, it's really low. But if you got a five twenty-five or four, four tw- four eighty, they're gonna charge you.
Let me stop you there, Cotton. I was at the meeting when you talked to Ms. Goldman. I'm gonna quote you what you told her. You asked Ms. Goldman about putting the tax, what would it, on the credit rating. You, you talked to Ms. Goldman. Yeah, you did.
We got the video, but go ahead.
Hey, I got, I, I can think too, 'cause I was sitting right there.
Okay.
But anyway, Mr. Cotton, you, you went to Ms. Goldman. You asked her, you said, Ms. Goldman, is there a way that we can do that bond tax? Ms. Goldman told you that, at that point, that it, it, it wouldn't be feasible to do it. Now you talking about you gonna do a, a bond tax on that, what, one, one point five million for them?
The way it works, Ms. Thompson, is that you, you, we authorize a tax, and we, we sell a bond, and the people who buy the bond will reap the benefit of getting the interest payment, okay? Whether it's a bank or some other type of, of financial institution. But it's a, the tax will secure the loan. We have to get a loan in order to get.
What if the tax, if, say the council don't vote for the tax, then what?
Well, we're not asking the council to vote for the tax. We're asking the council to let the people decide. And you can get out there and campaign against it, and I'm just asking to let the people decide. Why should we, I mean, this is a democracy.
Why would you put it on the ballot, Mr. Cotton?
To let the people decide. Not just you, Ms. Thompson. Not just me, and not just these two.
Yet and still, I hear from a lot of people, they ain't passing no tax.
Let, let them decide. If they wanna vote it down.
So what if the council said they, they don't wanna put it on there?
If they don't have the courage, or if they have the, 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 the whatever mindset to put it on the ballot on the same day that if we run for reelection, we'll be on the ballot. You could vote us out, vote the tax down. That's up to the people.
We gonna vote you out, but anyway.
That's fine.
I'm just saying.
That's fine.
Oh, oh, what, what, what if the council say no?
Then if the council say no, don't let my constituents, if the council doesn't trust their constituents to make an informed decision, then that should be up to the people, Ms. Thompson. This council's not saying, yeah, we're gonna do a tax. All this council, I'm asking this council to do is say, let's have the courage to let it be a referendum on March the 21st, 2021. No one should hide, and each councilman can say, go in their district and say, hey, I really don't want this to pass. That's their prerogative. But we should have the courage.
The people, the people in that district will call and tell them they don't want it to pass.
That's up to the people. Why do you not want it to go to the people?
Well, Mr. Cotton, you done tried everything since you been up here being the mayor. And like I said, I don't have a problem with those firefighters getting their money, but we.
How much money do you?
We ain't got no jobs to come here. What you done brought here? Tell me what you brought here. What you brought here?
What do we say?
Besides you thinking about education, you need to think about this.
You know, your, your three minutes has been up, but let's stick to, let's stick to you, let's stick to your question.
Okay, Mr. Cotton.
Let's stick to your question. Your question was about the tax.
Yes.
Who do you think pays the tax?
We all pay taxes, Mr. Cotton.
No, but who do you think, well, not everyone will pay this. I mean, if a person doesn't have, if a person doesn't have any real property, they, the fire protects property.
We know that.
The firemen.
They came out and put, protected me from my vehicle when it burned, so.
Okay.
I know that they do.
We have, Ms. Thompson, I campaigned to, made a promise that if I was elected, I would make sure the fire department had what it took, the kind of support.
You also made another promise that you would give those city workers a raise. You also made that promise.
Yeah, you give raises by reducing work, the number of workers, and employing machines.
Mr. Cotton, let me go to the next one that I got. Now, let me go to the next one, then you get into it.
Look, I'm gonna answer your question.
Now, with that batting, that ball thing, why you keep putting that on the ba- on this thing?
Because I wanna give public works employees raises, and I can't do it if I got fifty public works employees. You have to get machinery, just like, Ms. Thompson, you ever pick cotton?
Don't ask me that question. I done picked, pulled, and pulled a sack too, so what are you talking about?
We were replaced by cotton pickers, mechanical cotton pickers. You remember when there was fifty of us in Mr. Moes Perry's field down in Perriville?
I didn't go with that when I was in Van Hook, no, but.
Okay, well, one day, there was a machine that came down the road, and they put it in the field, and it did the work of fifty people.
Okay, Mr. Cotton.
Okay, so I'm asking for a machine that'll do the work of ten people, so that we can.
A ball machine, Mr. Cotton?
Have you ever seen it?
Yes, but.
What it, what is it? What's the name of it?
Why would you want it, it's gonna go around the thing. Somebody got to push it, right?
No, someone rides on it. Some, it's an ABI force, Ms. Thompson. It's an ABI force, twenty-three horsepower zero turn. The New York Yankees have them, the San Francisco Giants have them, the, the Philadelphia Phillies have them, the St. Louis Cardinals have them, and the city of Bastrop needs them. Ms. Thompson, the West Washtetla, if you watch it new this week.
I watched.
West, West Washtetla is spending fourteen million dollars on their sports complex next to Ag Hamble. I'm asking for less than one tenth of one hundred percent of what Ruston is spending.
Ruston is on the interstate. They can afford it. We, we, right here in this town here.
We can afford something. Thank you for your comments.
What you want, Dean?
Thank you for the comments.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Are there any other comments as it relates to items on the agenda? Nine A.M. FEMA?
Yeah, with him.
Nine A.M. I'll send you an invite. You can attend it virtually, or, or, or in person. If there's anyone else, councilmen, or we'll have our department heads there. We've been having meetings, we had, we've been having some productive meetings with our fire department. I wanna thank Chief Crowder and, and Fire Prevention Chief Williams for, they're in charge of the safety when we do the burn curtain. So we are on the process of, of getting that done. I expected to be here before December fifteenth, if we can get everything done. And we should be able to. Are there any other comments as it relates to items on the agenda? Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October eighth and the special meeting of October fifteenth, 2020. Do we have a?
I make the motion that we accept the minutes for both October eighth and October fifteenth, 2020.
It's been moved by Councilman Shaw. Seconded by Council Lady Moore. Any discussion, all in favor? The eyes have it. The minutes are approved. Item six, resolution twenty-nineeen nineteen, a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Bastrop, state of Louisiana, to authorize and levy and collect a special tax therein, making application to the state bond commission and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Mr. Bowles? Bill, can you come to the microphone?
Evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Council. This is the latest resolution as a result of your request for us to prepare the tax that, for the council to consider. This is at one point four mills. It produces seventy thousand, anticipated seventy thousand a year for ten years. And it's to be used for firefighter, firefighter purposes, primarily satisfy the obligation of firefighters' judgment.
Yes.
If anybody has any questions, I'll, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Bowles, well, appreciate you being here tonight. Could you kind of give us an idea of how we minimize the payback to the, to the firemen, which I agree we need to pay the firemen? We may have to make some hard decisions in order to pay, pay the firemen, so, you know, we need to do it. But anyway, could you kind of give us a little overview of the process that we go through in order to minimize the tax burden on our businesses and on our individuals, and just to kind of educate us quickly with it?
Well, first, first of all, I don't have anything to do with a negotiation with the firefighters. That is not something I, I do. So, all, but what I do is I prepare election calls, such as what you have before you, and I work with your municipal advisors on whoever would determine how much, you know, I can tell you, that can go to the decoster and tell you one mill produces approximately forty-eight or thousand dollars. This one point four is, is estimated produce seventy plus thousand dollars, right? It's a little over seventy. And so it's really just a function of that as to what number you're trying to solve, to what you need to get. Whatever that number is, you know, and so I, I really haven't even honestly been involved in that. The mayor, I think, has been speaking with Ms. Riggins at Government Consultants. Y'all have been working with them.
Bill, would you explain the fact that what we can obligate, what percentage, if we, say if we got fifty thousand dollars, if we collected fifty thousand dollars a year, then?
You can do seventy-five percent.
Right.
Into, into limited tax bonds. So that, that's all you can, you can do. And I'm, Ms. Shaw, that's what, when, I think that's where I got used, when you and I spoke. But, but we can only render into bonds seventy-five percent of those, so whatever seventy-five percent of seventy thousand, I have figured offhand, and I apologize, I've been on the road to Baton Rouge earlier.
It's, it's right at fifty thousand.
So fifty thousand is all you can, you can use for debt service. If we do, if we pass it, if you, if the electors, if you choose to put it on the ballot, and the electors choose to, to approve it, then if we were going to bring that money to the table in present day dollars, in other words, bond it, then we could only use seventy-five percent or fifty thousand dollars for annual debt service. That'd be principal and interest.
Right.
That's, that's, that's.
Can you just please combine with other revenue sources that could, you know?
Certainly, certainly.
Wouldn't it be proven then to maybe get?
Robert, he's a bond attorney.
Partner?
He's a bond attorney.
Yeah, but I, okay, go ahead.
That's a question for Mr. Pierre, I believe. But go ahead. But he's a bond attorney. His, he, he, Mr. Bowles was saying his role is a bond attorney and not to offer advice and counsel on how to mix revenue collections and how to do changes to budgets or anything like that. Now, Bill, if you want to address, but out of respect for Mr. Bowles, he's here to facilitate the bond. Now.
I'm not, Mayor, I wasn't taking our, our, our counsel out. I was just saying, if I couldn't, Mr. Bowles worked with our, Mr. Pierre, and developed a plan, then this is what we can do.
There's a plan developed, and Mr. Pierre, Mr. Pierre is in negotiations with the fire attorney. And, and I think we need to let him do his job and negotiate in good faith, and I have confidence that the firemen are, are going to authorize their attorney to negotiate in good faith, and we will just muddy the water the more we talk. We have it, Mr. Pierre, we have a plan to raise at least four hundred thousand dollars, and then we're gonna supplement that with four hundred thousand that we're, that out of a budget, out of the budget. So we're gonna have to pay something else. And we think we found, yeah, we think we found, but, but I don't want to talk about it here, you know, because we should be in executive session to have the conversation that you wanna have.
I'm just saying, it seems to me that we, we probably should table this.
We, we can't, Robert. We, we don't have any, how much time do we have, Mr. Bowles? Don't we need to get this to the bond? Do they meet in December?
If you wanna meet the, the March election, then you have to do this tonight. You could, you, I mean, there's an April election, which is a runoff, but to make the March election, you, you've got to, you've gotta act now. I mean, if that's, that's your choice.
I'm trying to let the voters decide. We shouldn't be the back catcher to keep things from going to the fence. The voters are intelligent enough to, if, if you're against it, make your case with the voters. Make the case with the voters in your district. If you're against it, tell them why. Have, have, have council district meetings. Tell them why you're against it. But, uh, Mr. Bowles, excuse me. Let's talk about what this is gonna cost. A person with a hundred thousand dollar home, one mill is ten dollars. Is that correct? A mill is a thousandth of a, a thousandth of a dollar. It's a tenth of a penny. And one mill on a hundred thousand dollar home is ten dollars. So we're asking people with a hundred thousand dollar home for fourteen dollars. That's what we're asking for. Because a hundred thousand dollar home is assessed at ten percent assessment for your house. So if you've got a hundred thousand dollar home, you look on your tax bill, it says ten thousand dollars. So one thousandth of that is, okay, that's what you're, it's ten dollars per a hundred thousand, if you got a hundred thousand dollar home. Now, this fire department has gone from class four to a class one. They bust their butts. That wasn't easy. We had to do a lot of things. We built a fire training ground. We, we put a tower on it. Fire District Number Two worked with us. This, these are the same people that was here for the last eight years when we went to a, to a three, two thousand five, we were two, two thousand ten, we slipped to a three, two thousand fifteen, we slipped to a four. People paid twenty-plus percent more in two thousand fifteen, starting in two thousand fifteen, than they did in two thousand five. I committed that that was top priority one, to get us back to at least a two. We knew that we had the personnel, they had the smarts. And what they've done, and what no one will talk about, is how much did I save? Is Tim Williams here? Tim, is he back there? Mr. Williams? Can you just stand up, please? Tim is our Fire Prevention Chief, and he was in charge of, he was the lead person in, in our fire reading drive. And I asked him some questions when Chief Crowder recommended that he had the, had the effort to, to, uh, take us to a one. I would tease him, 'cause I would ask him questions about water flow and formulas, and he spit them right back out at me like a mad teacher. This man looked at every single thing that we could get points. And we did everything that these same firefighters that's been here, he's been here twenty-plus years, Tim? Twenty-two years? Chief Crowder's been here a little longer? Now, number one, everybody is moaning and groaning about this T thing, this tax thing. Everybody's moaning and groaning. Look at what you've saved. Tim, when you get calls from insurance agents, and you do, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I just want you to tell the truth. When you get, I know you don't like this role. Would you tell the audience about one of your conversations that you had when you asked not to be identified? Did they ask you to confirm that we are now a one? Went from a four to a one, never been done in the history of towns in Louisiana? But what was the difference? Just take one, one house. What was the difference in savings?
Uh, generally, it's like thirty percent on the taxpayer. Which is high end house, which is six hundred dollars a year, public home house, maybe even a hundred.
Thirty percent. When I became, thank you, Tim. Thank you, sir. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. When I went to, when I was elected, I went to Northern Exposure on the bus, Washington Parish, with the Monroe Chamber to Northern Exposure, May first, twenty seventeen, a month, two months before taking office. Thank you, Bill. Sorry about that. I asked Ron Bush, I sat at the back of the bus and asked Ron Bush to compute what the savings would be from a four to a two. And he got back with me and told me that he ran the numbers, and generally, a little, little above twenty percent. And I thought, maybe I was wrong, that if we, the city of Bastrop, could get with Fire District Number Two and loose the hounds, let those men do what they know how to do. And if we brought a savings of thirty percent to every business and every individual, and I was wrong. But if we brought a savings of thirty percent on your house insurance, that you would in turn not complain about fourteen, fourteen dollars per hundred thousand dollar, say in your home? Twenty-eight dollars on a two hundred thousand dollar house? Forty-two dollars on a three hundred thousand dollar house per year? And I'm very disappointed, but I, I guess I was wrong, and I, there was a miscalculation on my part. I thought we had the integrity to know that this is the same coin, but it's heads and tails, it's, it's two sides of the same coin. Now, some of these firemen are dead, and their families need the money. Some of these farmers are in nursing homes, and their families need the money. Some of these firemen are still with us, and they need their money. And the only thing that I asked voters to do was to co-sign a note so that we could freeze this thing. When I, when I came in office, I saw a box in the thing, and I started going through the box, Mayor Jones let me go through the boxes and stuff, and I pulled this suit out. It was a box, brown box like that, and nothing had been done on it. Nothing. It sat there and could have been settled in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, for a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And now, it's grown to one point six, seven million plus, over a million, almost a million and a half dollars in judicial interest, north of three million dollars. We have an opportunity to sell it and get them some money. They're willing to negotiate with us and take less, much less than we owe, and we can get this thing behind us. It's a, it's an elephant in the room. We can get it behind us and let the voters decide if they want to put it behind them.
How did you come up with this one point?
That's a great question. I called Mr. Simmons because Howard, realizing that Simmons' Sporting Goods is the biggest retailer in Mois Parish, other than Walmart. And he's got such an expansive property and, and inventory. So, I asked him, and he called Robert. Is that true, Robert? Yeah. We went to see him. And we compromised and met somewhere, of course, we wanted one, but as Mr. Bowles said, if we borrow one mil, we can only apply seventy-five percent of that fifty thousand to the debt. So, that wouldn't do it. So, we had to take it up to one point four in order to have, so seventy-five percent will meet the requirement of getting a certain amount of money that we could offer the fireman in a lump sum, and then we could agree to, like Robert is saying, pay them, and we found some sources that we may be able to handle. But the thing about, last year, the judicial interest was six percent, and six percent of what we owe the firemen was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of four hundred and sixty-plus dollars a day. We owe them four hundred and sixty dollars more today than we did yesterday. We'll owe them four hundred and sixty dollars more tomorrow than we do today. This is a cancer, and it's eaten us. And we can take a little radiation to cure it. That's all I'm asking. Let the people decide. Don't sit here and block this. And I wanted it on the same day that we, whoever runs again, are up for reelection. Okay? Let it be a referendum. Let it be a referendum. Yes, ma'am.
Have we talked to Mr. Simmons like within the last week or two?
Yes. Several times. And one thing with this, Mayor.
What is that?
You promised him if you get back with him.
Wait, 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 Robert. Wait a minute, wait a minute. No, I asked you to communicate. Wait, wait a minute now. I asked you, I thought you were communicating. You never called me since the meeting, not one time. I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll make my logs public. I'll make them public, but you have not called me on either one of these phones. I keep them with me all day, and I don't have one missed call from you. You didn't call me.
Never mind that, but he was expecting you to get back with him.
Let me, let me talk a little bit about something else here. It's the same thing. The difference between a business tax, you see, we think that all the tax is gonna be on our chamber members and this, and they're gonna pay the brunt of it. The brunt of this tax is gonna be paid by energy. Atmos gas. Every, Atmos gas replaced virtually all the lines in Bastrop last year. That's Public Works. Public Works is not taxed, are not assessed at ten percent, it's assessed at twenty-five percent. Who's really paying this? It's energy with all their poles. Every pole that they replaced during the storm, when they put that pole in the ground, it had a new value. And that is going to the tax assessor's records. All these transmission lines, Exxon's pipelines under the ground are being assessed at twenty-five percent, not ten percent. That's the bulk of where the money's coming from. The bulk is Public Works projects and Public Works. The massive bulk, the bulk of it, is coming from that. And this image that, that we're taxing the downtown businesses abnormally high.
If we told them that, Mayor, we should just communicate that to the community.
I'm trying. I've said this in these meetings. I've said this in these meetings. Go back and look at the tape. I said Public Works projects, energy, Atmos gas, AT&T, every inch of fiber optic cable, every time they lay a line, and they lay a million dollars worth of infrastructure, they're taxed at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then it's one mil of that. We are not paying the bulk. And where's our appreciation for these guys who had faith to believe that if they bust their tails and got us to what's never been done in Louisiana, going from a four to a one, saving, including Mr. Simmons, thirty percent roughly, including Arnett's Jurys and, and D N H and, and, and other people who own property, saving up to thirty percent? He was saving this much, and we're asking for this much?
Well, that's what I was getting.
And we're crying.
I was getting to say on our first talking, before we first started, communicate that through our appropriate attorney. Get this laid out and say, look, this is where we've been finding this.
I think the question is that communication hasn't been given to the citizen. So, so right now, whenever you hear the word tax.
Yeah, people scream.
Everybody is against.
Go ahead, Mr. Locke.
I don't think the word has been communicated for how everybody's gonna benefit from it.
I say it every meeting, of four to a one, Mr. Locke, but go ahead. I mean, I don't know how to make it cleaner. And, and, and when we had the meeting in October, and the crowd came and, you know, was ready to do whatever, I said, one guy, one gentleman, I said, we're gonna go to at least a two. We knew, I was assured by Chief Crowder and Chief, Chief Williams, we studied, we looked at formulas, we did everything. We changed, we changed from our nine-one-one to the sheriff's nine-one-one. We agreed to pay the sheriff because we were losing two points, because ours wasn't digital. I followed everything I explained to this counsel, what we were doing, why we were doing it, how we were stepping our way to a one rating. We've been talking about this from when I asked you in October to dedicate two acres for a fire training ground. We had that little, that little mess down at H V Adams, that little mess of a fire training ground, about less big as this room, with a, with a tower that was wood, that was rotten, hadn't been used, and everything was explained, you can go back and look at the tapes, every time we've talked about the tax for selling with the firemen, this was the same coin. Heads or tails? Heads, you win. Because we're trying to save you twenty-plus percent on your insurance. And come June, by law, every insurance agency has to be a, a member of the organization, it's in, in law, it's qualified, that in order to sell insurance in Louisiana, you have to give, you have to go down when the rating is better. You have to, by law. In June, everyone's insurance. Call your agent, ask what was my savings? And they'll have to give it to you. So. This past June? You called them?
I had to get a letter from the fire department, who took to my insurance.
Did you get it? But, no, but did you get it?
Yeah, I got it.
And we've announced here to everybody on this, on this video, these videos, back in June, or March, we said, hey, come June, I even read part of the law.
They don't, they don't automatically do it, though.
No, no, they don't. They like commissions, you know? A lot of agents lost, lost a lot of money in commissions because of the performance of the fire department. And so, I'm just asking, let's stop kicking the can. That's what administrations did for, since two thousand eight, for the last twelve years, kick the can down the road, kick the can down the road, and that's what you're doing, is kicking the can. Who's gonna pick it up?
It's a matter of communication. That's all we have to ask. How many times do we come here and you tell us we got to nicely vote on this? Just communicate. That's all everybody's asking for.
I have two phones, I have two phones, Larry. I have two phones. You can call me anytime, and each of you know that. Two phones. Go ahead, miss. Oh, my God.
Our rating from a four to a one, they've done a great job. But this group of firemen, some of them were here during the administration where this happened, but you have a lot of young firemen that this doesn't even apply to, that has changed our rating. So, we just want to thank them.
All of them? Yeah.
We do, and we want to pay them their money, but when you tell people taxes, we getting clawed.
The only way we get money, basically, is through ad valorem taxes or sales taxes. The bulk of this, we don't have utility companies, we got sewer, and we don't really make any money off sewer. We don't make any profit. In fact, we were below. We were at point eight-five percent of what it was costing us, and the state made us. Is that true, Ms. Goldman? They made us do it. We just did almost a million dollars worth of work on sewer. We got a grant. And in order to get that grant, the state made us adjust our rates, and we didn't automatically do the automatic thing. We declined to do that because we had to do it under this grant. We got seven hundred thousand dollars or so in grant money. Okay? And, but Miss Moore, being, as a representative democracy, which requires tough decisions when you sit in the chair that you're sitting in, it requires, some people are not gonna like it. Well, well, those people, in good conscience, this tax word has been demonized to such an extent that, that governments all over the country are suffering because tax revenues, particularly property tax revenues, dwindling. Now, this is the only way to fix this. And the firemen are willing to, they've come more than halfway with us, and we are not doing, we're gonna do just like other administrations have done, kick the can, not take action, and it's never gonna go away. Never gonna go away. It's not gonna fix itself. We can't afford to pay the interest every year. We can't come up with a hundred and seventy-seven thousand last year. The judicial interest last year was six percent. This year, it's five point six percent, but it's five point six percent of a greater amount, almost two hundred thousand dollars more. So, all I'm asking is that you let the voters decide. Let the voters decide. What's wrong with trusting voters? And we're talking about one point four mils. A mil is a thousandth of a dollar, a tenth of a penny. You know, penny's a hundredth of a dollar, and a mil is, is ten of those mils and a penny. You know, sort of like when Jesus talked about a dove, or two, two of them, two of them for a fathering, because you couldn't buy just one. You know, we're talking about something very minimal to cure a problem that is insurmountable. And every year, if you all vote, if you all run for reelection and get reelected, or somebody's sitting in this seat, then you don't have to levy the whole mil. This is like, this is a surety so we can go and get the money and settle. And now, then we can attack it because it would be of a size that we could manage and attack. Until we get it down, right now, we owe this much. Well, the firemen were to take somewhere, somewhere, and I'm, I'm not gonna say where because I don't know, but it will allow us to work with them to get it to a manageable level because please have the courage to let the voters decide. Please help us cure this so our credit rating will go back up. We could only borrow, we've been borrowing one and a half million dollars every year, or up to a hundred million and a half. We could only get seven hundred thousand this year. One day, we're only gonna be able to get three hundred thousand to tide us over to a revenue anticipation note for our end. So, I'm just asking, we say we love the firemen, but we don't love them one point four mils worth. We say we love them, if, if we, that's a lie. If we say we love them and we won't do one, we won't let the voters decide on one point four mils, we don't care about their families. We don't care about the ones. Well, okay, all right, you shake your head. But if we cared, it's not gonna kill anyone. It's not gonna kill anyone. And we've got a plan, and I, I've talked to you about the plan, Robert. I've talked to you about it. you about it, the plan to do the other, where we can get the other money from, I've talked to you about that, we've got a plan.
And the head of this may lay it out, this is where we can play this game.
Well, that's something for executive de se- executive session, you know, if you all want to run into executive session now, I'll tell you what, I'll answer your question. But this is in litigation, Mr. Pierre. Uh, now what's gonna happen is, one day we're gonna have to cut costs and fire department's our biggest cost, it's our biggest cost center, it is, is, is the fire, is fire our biggest?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was.
We have more than one there.
Yes, ma'am. And we, there's no other city in Louisiana our size.
We have a good possible.
Well, if, if revenue declines, Mr. Green, i- i- if, if we abandon the idea, oh, let's just forget it, let's go back to a four, we can go back to a four and staff like thirty firemen, okay, close a station or two, hey, we can save some money, but what's gonna happen when the child's trapped in a room and there's smoke billowing in? Those are real things.
Ma'am, what does that have to do, I mean, you said if revenue decrease.
If revenue decrease, yeah.
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 But you know, Mr. Mary, I did, like you keep saying we don't care about the firemen, that's not what we're saying.
Okay, all right.
We do love our firemen.
Love, okay.
A lot of people do not want to have to pay this debt.
They can vote against it, they can vote against it, there's a ballot, people can go and pull no, all I'm asking for you to is let the people vote no, let the people vote no. If every, if, if people can't understand, now, what's, what I have to think about is this, the minimum wage is probably gonna increase and if the minimum wage increases, the city of Bastrop along with other businesses is gonna be in real deep trouble, it'll increase in increments, it will increase from seven-twenty-five to fifteen or twelve or ten immediately. But Ms. Goldman knows what'll happen if the minimum wage, and it is, it is gonna increase because it's, last one was two thousand seven, so it's been thirteen years and you do your research on minimum wage increases, when it happens, we have to be in a position to have, to do with less employees or increase revenue. These things are coming, we're trying to get ready for them, I'm trying to get ready for it, I'm trying to get ready, that's why I'm asking for machinery, so that we can put two people over here, you can shake your head, you can vote against it, that's why it's on here. That's fine, that's fine, just.
Don't, don't force it, let the voters vote.
Yeah, for letting the voters vote? Thank you, Councilman Green, you have a lot of courage. Let the voters decide and if you want to campaign against it, let that be part of your platform to get reelected, you know, I'm against it, um, you gotta, you know, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollar home, you're gonna pay two dollars a year, two dollars and fifty cents a year to the city? Two dollars and fifty cent a year? Twenty, well, uh, if we table it.
You can own for a hour and a half.
Diddy, it's grave, it's graver than anyone thinks. I think we should let the voters decide, in fact, I know we should let the voters decide, let them decide, if everybody's against it, it's gonna fail. What are we afraid of? What do we have to lose? I'm quoting someone, what do we have to lose?
Not if the backup plan.
There is no.
If it don't fail, what's the backup plan?
If it, if it what?
If it fails, what's the backup plan? Either way, we, we got to pay each other.
The, the backup plan is we'd be indebted to them for the rest of our lives unless we do something like this and hit it in the head and, and kill it. Mr. Prater, it grows by a hundred, it's gonna be growing by two hundred thousand a year, we can't even.
Ask you not to pass.
We'll deal with that then. Okay, okay. The backup plan is to do something creative like that again, to get a lump sum to pay them. The only way we can get a lump sum, when we, when we do the tax, you take the documents, Mr. Bowles will take that and he'll say, hey, city of Bastrop is gonna raise this much money, now we need a lump sum of dollars and they'll, it's collateral.
Can it be done else?
No, it has to be backed up by a, Mr. Bowles?
Revenue stream.
It has to be backed up by a revenue stream. We can't take sewer money and do this, we can't take street money and do this, we can't take other monies and do this. No, it's, you get a bond and you take that to the financial institutions and they say, here's a lump sum of money, go pay them, now we're dealing with a whole different si- situation. Now we're paying the bond back and they've signed saying, hey, I'll sell for this, this is all you owe me?
Well, I guess what I was asking, when you first brought it to us.
Yes, sir.
Was you able to do that, get a bond?
We have to have a tax, we have to have something dedicated.
See, what I'm saying is, you, when you said if it don't fail, everyone actually owes the backup plan.
Okay, we're right back where we are, we're back to square one.
So, what we do at square one?
At square one, we owe them three-point-some million dollars, next year, say it's three-point-one, next year it'll be three-point-three.
What we owe them, I'm saying, what do we do about getting them paid? Because if the Prater asked you, if it don't fail, then what's the backup plan?
The backup plan is to come up with something creative and, and you can cut police and you can cut fire, the backup plan is to cut the fire, if they're ever gonna get paid, cut the fire department, if, if the public don't care about paying full rates, we can easily do that.
My question was, I guess my question would be, was there was other options, ways, why, why we come to a tax, let the voters?
No, no, there are no alternate ways, Mr. Green, there is no way the city of Bastrop can afford to pay a three-point-some million dollar debt that grows by two hundred thousand dollars a year, there is no way, we, it, it can't exist. And then, uh, here comes another administration, Mr. Green, that says, oh, forget them, forget the firemen.
We have pretty much our expenses.
And that's okay, that's what we feel like, back here.
I mean, that's not okay, that's not, that's not okay.
No, no, that's not what we're saying.
We can shut up and go to work, y'all owe you this money, this is not some government handout of welfare, they got a backup plan and it should work.
I agree, I agree, y'all owe them money.
We're just trying to find an alternative, we're trying to find an alternative, what you pay without a tax.
There is no, there is no alternate way to pay without a tax, it doesn't exist. Think right now, who can come up with it now? Mr. Prater, you got an alternate way to pay, other than this?
As, as the board, we should.
We showed what?
You go to three boroughs for everything else, ask them, ask the mother cities that you go to for this and that, what, what can they offer?
You have, do you have any idea of what we can do as an alternat-? Okay, Mr. Locke, do you have any idea of an alternative?
No, don't, ma'am, it looks like, like I said, if you have communication between the citizens, fire department, and citizens, I think we could all come to some type of agreement on doing something.
Like what?
I mean, I'm thinking of this part of the people too, I'm not putting names for the voters.
I'm just saying, like what? We've been talking about this for three, three and a half years.
We should have a contingency plan.
The contingency plan is this plan, we're talking about one-point-four mills, a mill is a thousandth of a dollar.
We've got this for.
Yeah, we're talking about this, but it starts with a T, you know?
I'd like to ask Mr. Bowles.
If it's about bonds, Robert, if it's about the bonding process.
It is. About paying that. Um, Mr. Bowles, can we take more than one revenue stream to clear this one, or this bond?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it be prudent to let this man work with our attorney and come up with a plan that we can all agree?
L- l- ask your question clearly though, Robert, you said, can you combine revenue streams? What type of revenue streams? You had asked me about can we take sewer money and do this, I said, no.
That's a long, long time ago.
You asked, could we take road money and do it, I said, no.
And we don't understand that now.
Bill?
Where is what the mayor not available at all tonight, because that's our question, about what's the other revenue streams you could use for this money?
And you can't, you can't.
And he said, no, we can't, I said, well, he's a boss.
Well.
It relates to bonds.
But he's saying other revenue streams.
Bill, can, can you explain?
We need to not tell us the different revenue streams.
Well, I'm not saying you captive that, but let, be there, who needs to be there?
You could use any revenue stream that wasn't otherwise dedicated to something else, like you can't, the street tax is money that's dedicated just for streets, water and sewer money is supposed to be used for water and sewer, uh, this would be what you're considering tonight, is a brand-new tax that's not obligated for anything that could be used for that. You could use excess revenues to do that, but you, you don't have those, we, that's why we have to go borrow money to, until we get this, the property taxes in to do it every year, so you could use other revenue streams if you have them, that they're not otherwise dedicated for some other purpose.
So what, what he's saying is, every June, you have three budgets that y'all look over and y'all vote to pass that will start July one, that's the general fund, that's the sewer you see, and it's the street sales tax, those are the three. You have to look at your general fund budget, I'll be glad to give you an accompaniment, you need to find the cuts that you're gonna make in that general fund, it's line item, turn in what you wanna cut and see if you can do it, I don't think you can do it. Number one, you need your police, we're already sure, you wanna keep the firemen, they work hard.
Jesus Christ.
Everybody sacrificed to get to the one and for you to go back, that's a slap in the face.
What's the, what was?
Okay, the other city workers has not had a raise since two thousand six, you, they make the less in your budget, if you cut the one that you have out, you still don't have enough money to pay our firemen. That's the way it is.
If I'm doing it, I don't know.
Y'all wanna look at it?
Jesus Christ.
Y'all look at the budget every month. But we're, we're, it's crunch time, if you put it off today, that means we gotta pay twenty-five or a thousand dollars to have a election on April. That's what it costs us for an election, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Can we, the city workers hadn't had a raise since two thousand?
Two thousand six, so we give everybody a two percent tax in order to give them a raise.
That's a great question and I'm glad you ask it. The best way, our philosophy from the start, Ms. Moore, is we went from a whole different org- org- uh, structure with Public Works, we had supervisors, when they retired, we didn't, we didn't replace supervisors, we went to a team leader concept, Terry Peoples and Michael Winfield are team leaders, the supervisors would get and fold their arms and watch other people work, they get the chainsaw and get in there with them and lead. So we have a whole different mentality in our Public Works Department, so we have less Public Works, is that not true, Ms. Goldman, than we had in two thousand and fifteen? We got less employees?
Yes.
Considerably less.
Yes.
Yes, because the only way we could balance the budget was not to rehire when we, when people retired, rather than cutting people, I just let it go down, but the philosophy was, we bought an asphalt truck, it was in your district day before yesterday, Robert, repairing potholes, two people, two people can operate the asphalt truck, rather than having six people with shovels, we got an infrared asphalt truck, lets the, lets the bed down, heats the pavement, the asphalt seventeen-hundred degrees, it really catches on fire and we get in there and we can do a repair that'll last five, six, seven years, rather than throwing and going, chunking coal mix in. We got a Kubota, we got a skid steer, we used to have eight people down on the lot with chainsaws and axes, now we send a Kubota down there and it eats up the, the debris and the little trees around the house in an hour and a half, takes one person, Michael Winfield gets on it and he goes and he, he, so the key is to get machinery that will do the work of people and we can then give those, there are several people in Public Works who've had raises, is that true, Ms. Goldman? We raised several people?
Yes, sir.
In Public Works? We're not blanket raising everyone, we're looking at what skills do they have, can they operate machines, do they have C D L? We're trying to keep the quality of people and, Miss, 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 uh, Miss Moore, a seven-dollar-and-twenty-five cents an hour employee times two thousand eighty hours a year is fifteen thousand eighty dollars. It doesn't stop there, we have to match their FICA, they're social security and they're Medicare, okay, that's seven-point-six-five percent, then we have to add, um, healthcare at about six hundred bucks a month pe- a piece, that's another seven thousand two hundred dollars roughly, then we add workman's comp, is that true, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, sir.
We add workman's comp, then we have to participate in the municipal retirement center, we have to kick in thirty percent, twenty-nine-point-eight something, whatever it is.
Seven-hundred and thirty.
Yeah, thirty-three percent of that fifteen thousand eighty dollars, we gotta kick in another five, so that person that's sticking and picking up litter costs us twenty-eight grand a year, that's the lowest-paid person that's picking up litter. The way you pay people more is to get a machine, get machines so that we can have people out burning debris and we can have people, two people or three people on potholes, we can have four, two people in parks, we can have people, we can get more done with less people and then you can give raises, because if you don't give raises, you're not gonna keep your employees because other people are paying more. We've lost people at Walmart because Walmart starts at above ten dollars an hour, we have people who were faithful and good workers that we've lost, so we've got to structure, we've got to structure so that we can, we've got to structure so that we can get stuff done with machines and skilled labor, rather than a bunch of people like we're in Angola Chain Gang or something with hoes and shovels and rakes on our shoulders, so that's why I'm asking for tools to work with, because we've got to find a way to do more with less because the minimum wage increase is coming down the road, it might be three years before it catches there, but it's gonna get here, mark the tape, it's gonna get here and I'm trying to fix it so we're not upside down and can't meet payroll. If minimum wage kicked in and it was just ten dollars an hour, eleven dollars an hour, that affects our firemen's pay, it serves as a new base, doesn't it, Ms. Goldman? It serves as a new base, so now we gotta pay them two percent increase on that new thing, if we don't get ready to right this ship now, next generation, the next generation of leaders here, we're gonna leave them as upside down on a lot of things as we were when we came here. Now, I'm asking this, you've heard from Ms. Goldman, you've heard from the firemen, I'm just asking that you allow the voters to do this because there is no other way, there is no other way and the pain, I mean, we've saved thirty percent on every property, well, you know, twenty-four to thirty, the motion is made, second by Mr. Locke. Any discussion question?
Hold on, say what the motion was.
To let this go to the voters, stop kicking the can. It's been moved and second. All in favor of letting this go to the voters and letting the voters in each of your respective districts decide? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Roll call, Ms. Goldman.
Mr. Shaw?
Uh.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Hi.
Mr. Locke?
Hi.
More, it's, it's four to one.
Thank you so much, God bless each of you. Okay, um, the motion passed, thank you, Mr. Bowles, for your assistance. Thank you, thank you. Resolution, item seven, resolution twenty-dash-nineteen. Resolution, item seven, resolution twenty-nine-teen-twenty-four, a resolution provided for canvassing of returns and declaring the results of a special election held by the City of Bastrop, State of Louisiana, on Saturday, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty. We had an election, and all of our, thank to all the wonderful voters who wanted to see the City of Bastrop continue to provide services. They passed, and in your package, you have the canvassing, what's the number on that? Number seven, Ms. Goldman? Item seven, if you look in there, you'll see the count per, for every precinct. That's, Ms. Goldman, you wanna comment on what we're doing here?
This, this just, uh, in terms of results of the election, if you create some heads, it's a requirement of election law. If you do that, this is a, if we get the, the, some of these, and y'all get some record at the Secretary of State, we call it at the courthouse. So, it's just a step in the election process where you announce formally, formally, commiserate or announce that these are our results.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman, thank you, Mr. Bowles. It's been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Council Lady Moore. Any discussion, all in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Item eight, Finance Committee Report, resolution twenty-nine-teen-twenty-three, bills and claims for the month of October, two thousand twenty. Mr. Shaw, Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Shaw.
Yes, Mayor, we've reviewed the bill for the month of October, two thousand twenty, and we recommend approval.
Been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman Locke, that this be approved in the discussion, all in favor? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, Mr. Ricky R. Dickerson, would you come to the microphone, please?
Okay. My hope and my goal is to make this presentation brief. I, I don't think I have a lot of things to burden the City of Bastrop. So, I'm hoping that, um, that this will go pretty smoothly.
Yes, sir.
To all the, um, okay.
Yeah, just a little. You can take your time, 'cause I know it's harder to breathe.
Yeah, yeah, it's just that, it smokes come up in my glasses.
Can that microphone be pulled back a little bit, Mr., Mr.? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you can, you can go on lower a little bit to, sir can breathe if you need to.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
To all the city council, the mayor, and the citizens of Bastrop, I wa, I would like to thank you for taking the time out to listen to this proposal. I would like to, uh, my, I would like to give you my name. My name is Ricky Dickerson. I was born and raised here, uh, in Bastrop. I moved away when I was eighteen. I lived a lot of different places. I moved to Dallas, Texas from Fresno, California to work for Texas Instrument Raytheon slash Raytheon for thirty years before I relocated and moved back to Bastrop in two thousand and thirteen. Now, this proposal I have is from the citizens of the community, known to the black community here in Bastrop as the Puff Ditch Community. I, uh, I hold here a petition with close to three hundred names, with close to three hundred names that wants to see that bridge being reconstructed, uh, on Martin Luther King to give the legal name Puff Ditch, to give it the legal name Puff Ditch. Now, this is where, uh, this is not a burden. I have, I have support from the local business, from some of the community members, to help fund this, this design, this nameplate that I hope to attach to the bridge whichever way it, it allows, uh, to do it. So, that's, that's pretty much basically it. We, I, if, if you want these, look over them, I don't know how it's done.
Can we have a copy of that?
Okay, okay, yeah, that's a, that's a, you can make a copy and I can come back and get it, or whatever you'd like for me to do.
I've got a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
Welcome home, first.
Oh, okay, that sounds like a prelude, okay.
No, no. Did you live across the ditch ever?
No, I didn't. I was there every day. I mean, that's, that's, you know, I, I, I lived there.
Yeah, well, well, you know, the, uh, we've always called that the Puff Ditch, because International Paper, uh, when they took the bark off trees, that's the way that they got rid of it.
Right.
Those chemicals were in that ditch, and, uh, you could throw a mangy dog off in that, tie a rope around it and pull it.
So, you were here?
I was here and I spent a lot of time across the ditch. Many, many classmates and friends.
And so, there's a, there's a lot of, I'm a kind of a nostalgic guy, I remember a lot of things, and so, being away, that's, that's kind of, uh...
Here's, here's the thing that we, we work with a group called, uh, uh, King Streets. Uh, there are seven hundred and fourteen streets, the Martin Luther King Streets. And Michael Fleming is, uh, the head of that, okay? And, uh, formally naming the ditch bridge away from the Dr. Martin Luther King South Bridge is the formal name, and it's on all of the plans on the rebuilding. And it would be a stretch for me to recommend to this council that we take Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King off of the bridge, because that's its formal name.
Okay, even, even with, even with, uh, yeah, it wasn't, it was North Hagerty a long time ago. And all those people live there. And so, those people, those people deserve, uh, because they're taxpayers, deserve to pay, uh, because they pay taxes, deserve to, for that. Now, they're not the Sugar Hill Community or the Spacestate Community, but they hold a lot of pride. They, they have, they have parks, they have, uh, parties or functions out in the park, they call themselves Puff Ditch Community and all that. So, it was way before it was Martin Luther King, it was Hagerty.
I understand, I understand, but formally, to do a formal name change, to go to the state of Louisiana, to go, go through, to go through, and now, I'm not for, I'm not against any informal names and recognition, 'cause everybody always called Puff Ditch Bridge anyway. I mean, it's always, it's always, ever, sir?
Go on.
Go ahead, I'll allow you to speak from there, go ahead. Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Right, so, and it's a, and it is...
Well, we're, naturally, we're not gonna take any action tonight, but I want the council to, to think about this, and we'll invite you back. We got several more months to build.
Okay, I'll, I'll bring my, I'll bring my whole crew in.
Bring all three hundred, okay. But, but look, we respect, we respect the bridge. You, you live across the ditch? What street? Commerce. Did you know Michael Robinson?
Okay. Let me ask this question. You said that legal name to go through the state of, uh, to go to the city of Baton Rouge. Now, couldn't, couldn't we do, just, just put, just get our name, 'cause we gonna pay for it?
And put a plaque?
Yeah.
Well, look, I, I would not be opposed to some kind of designation, informal designation, Puff Ditch, you know, puff.
Yeah, put the, put the name.
Yeah, and that's a state bridge. We have to petition through our, through our, yeah, through our, the City of Bastrop, we do all the...
But the, the nameplate itself, the design making it, and then attaching it to the bridge?
We'll talk to the state, we'll talk to the state, okay? But as far as the formal renaming, that, uh, you know, that's a horse of another color, okay? But as far as recognition, we may be able to achieve something. So, just give us time, 'cause bridges, we're driving piles now. We, it's gonna take probably till March to get it done, all right? So, we, we, we've got time to talk about this, all right?
But for it to be MLK is just because of this change of the name in Baton Rouge?
No, no, it was, it's a state, it's a state bridge, the state owns the bridge. The City of Bastrop, we had to do all the work to get the grant, to get the state to do the money. We've done a ton of work.
So, so, is that your, is that, is that your only thing? If it wasn't a state bridge, would it, would it, say it wasn't a state bridge?
Well, honestly, formerly, me, I knew Dr. King, okay? I said I, I knew Dr. King, all right? It would be hard for me to...
The road, the whole street is named Martin Luther King. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And the bridge is the Martin Luther King Street South Bridge, when it was designed in nineteen ninety-eight. When it was designed in nineteen ninety-eight, that's on the plans, the Martin Luther King Street South Bridge, so...
This is, this is something that, that, that community really, they really wanted. If you look at all those names that are on there, you're gonna have...
We, we understand that, we'll try to accommodate as best we can, but I doubt if the state's gonna, I doubt if we're gonna get that done.
State fund, you said state fund? What, what do you mean by state fund?
Yeah, we can probably do something, yeah. We, we'll try to do some acknowledgement, uh, you know, some formal acknowledgement. But we're not gonna sell this tonight. That's all I'm saying, we're not gonna sell it tonight.
So, how do I get on the agenda again, or you gonna call me?
Same way, same way. Give us until January, 'cause we're still gonna be constructing. Yeah, yeah, and we'll try to figure out some kind of, because we've had all types of, uh, suggestions on who to name it after. Mr. Locke knows that and...
Yeah, I, I, I know, I know of, of that as well, Luther Smith. So, so you, so, let me, let me say this. What, what, well, you guys don't understand that the old Creole dialect of Puff Ditch and where it originated from. You guys, when you say Creole, I know you think of Cajun. There's a, there's a group of Africans that went to the Atlantic Coast from Georgia, South Carolina, Tampa, Florida, that's called Gullah Geechee. We speak that language. I've heard my grandmother speak that language.
Okay.
So, so, you guys don't understand the culture that you're...
We, we, we...
Just giving away. And the, and the fact that those people, the atrocities that those people went through with this bridge, they deserve some kind of plaque for showing what they did.
Yeah, we, we'll do our best to accommodate the community, and, uh, you know, we, we endear, we endear the, the Puff Ditch Community, okay? You know, we, Daisy Street, um...
I think you guys are forgetting about the, uh, you know, you wanted, people want, people want the pretty names now and all that stuff.
No, no, we just, we just honor Dr. King still, okay? That's all. We'll do our best, we'll do our best.
What about the people that live here?
Right, that's been living there.
Have died from the defibrillations of the toxins, they died from cancer and all that elimination, and the younger kids is growing up. The people that needed to be working on that, even though we had to go outside of Bastrop to get a big contractor, to make sure that some of those people out there that are just hanging out could have a job. And that would have been a good...
The, 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 the toxic waste that those people had to put up with, uh, that this city put on them, even though I'm not, I'm not trying to make anybody feel uncomfortable, but we have to endure that.
We, we understand. I've thrown many dogs in the Puff Ditch, okay? And when you pull it out, when your dog have mains, mains, oh, you throw him over, and then the chemicals were so strong until you throw the dog in there and you pull him out, and it would cure. We understand, and we know that it caused cancer, that's why the EPA made them, uh, take that out to Perrville.
So, you got three hundred names or more that, that you're just gonna throw to the side?
We're not throwing anything to the side, sir, you're not listening to me. I'm saying that we're, we're gonna do our best to accommodate the people. We're gonna do our best. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna try to do some formal recognition, okay?
Because all, all, all we want is the, is the name.
Recognition, yeah, sure. There's not, I don't think there's gonna be a problem. So, just, just work with us. We're not turning you down, just work with us, okay? All right. Yeah, we can, we can accommodate. Hey, thanks a lot. We endure, and, uh, uh, just get my number, guys, just, I'll get...
Can I have your number?
Three, seven, six. Four, three, nine, one.
Four, three, nine, seven?
Nine, one.
Nine, one, eight, seven, six.
No, three, seven.
Three, seven, six, thank you, sir.
And, uh, three oh seven, three oh seven, six, four, six, two.
This is you?
Yeah, three oh seven, six, four, six, two. You got me?
Wait a minute, no, I didn't, that was too fast.
Three zero seven.
Three, zero, seven.
Six, four.
Six, four.
Six, two. Yeah.
All right, I look forward to working with you.
We look forward to recognition that's, that's due, the people of the community, there's a lot of pride.
Thank you.
Yeah, and did you know Joe David Whitmore? Razor? Okay, Big D? Okay.
You ever know Marvin Jackson?
Yes.
Janet Jackson?
His sister?
You remember Janet Jackson, Marvin Jackson?
I remember Marvin Jackson. Yeah, he was a lot younger. Yes, hey, thank you. What year? Were you? Oh, you guys are young. Okay. Okay, thanks, we look forward to it. Thank you for your community interest. We love to see people come with, uh, community interest. Item number ten, Mr. Kennedy. We should have put you way up at the top of the list.
I've enjoyed the, I've enjoyed the, uh, I've enjoyed all the conversation. I'll, I'll just stand back, because that's gonna get on my nerves. I can talk loud enough everybody to hear me, I think. Uh, first of all, thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to talk, to speak. The last time that I was here, uh, I asked for permission for our church, New Life Church, to have the gateway. I don't know if any of you have seen the work we've done, but, uh, thank y'all for letting us do that, and I hope you'll pay attention, uh, to that, and I hope we can keep it looking good, uh, for the city. But I'm here to talk...
Joe, how many are you done? Are you just doing one?
Just, just that one, just the east.
Can you give the location of that one, so everyone will know, Pastor Joey?
The east gateway coming into Bastrop, um, right in front of Subway, right there. It's, it's coming along. But I'm here tonight to, uh, talk about, um, a deal that we're trying to do for Christmas in, in lieu of, uh, the Christmas parade because of the COVID deal. We're not able to have the Christmas parade this year, sadly. Long as I can remember, there's been a Christmas parade, but COVID's kinda throw, thrown everyone into a loop this year. So, we've, we've kinda come up with a deal called Something Merry, Something Bright, which is an idea that, um, instead of having a parade drive through the middle of town, uh, we're, we're trying to, to rent out fifteen-by-twenty spaces in Carter Park so that people can drive through there. What is the renting for? The renting would be about a fifty-dollar charge to any business or church or person, whoever would wanna do it. And all the money that, that is raised is going towards the fire department's toy drive, uh, anyone that wants to do that and be a part of it. And it, it will be around, maybe even around the perimeter of the park, through the park, uh, in the trees, where the picnic areas are, any places in there, and that, that would be kind of, uh, drawn out by the other people that are, that are organizing and, and doing, um, this deal. And so, I guess we're, we're here just to, just to seek approval for that, to see if that would be okay. There's no profit there, there's nothing that we're gonna, uh, put in our pockets. We, we really are trying to do it to help, help with the toy drive. But to also, again, just bring some Christmas cheer to the, to our community, uh, and try to bring awareness to Bastrop, get people to come. And at the same time, not steal from the, from the weekend that Central Baptist is doing their thing, their drive-through nativity that they do every year. They, uh, they're the seniors in, in town as far as that goes. So, we're not trying to take that away. We're trying to hold on to that, that first weekend where the Christmas parade would normally be.
Okay. Counsel? Okay. Counsel?
I make the motion. Come on, man, it's, sir, I make the motion.
Okay, the motion's made by Mama, by Mama Moore and second by son DeeDee Green Moore. Any discussion? All in favor? Is that unanimous? It's unanimous, Pastor Joey. And we appreciate, uh, all that you do and church, your church family and, and we, uh. Yeah, yes, ma'am. Yes. In fact, a group had called and I had directed them to, to, uh. Right there by Subway, where the road splits, Elm Street, Elm Street, Ed Elm, where the road splits. The flower, the flower deal with the signs saying Bastrop.
The new signs that say Welcome to Bastrop, that's, uh, right in the median, right between, uh, where it splits and the furniture, furniture shop is there.
Pastor Joey, please, please keep us posted on what the city can do. And we're gonna, we're gonna get, I haven't had a chance to come and, and, and research your water, that water deal that we were talking about day before yesterday.
It's gonna be on December the fifth. It's only gonna be one, one evening from five. Did I get that date right? That's the fifth, right? December fifth, isn't that correct? I think that's right. Uh, from five to seven. It'd just be a two hour, about a two hour deal.
Oh, you want.
But primarily, you know, to raise awareness, to bring a little Christmas cheer, uh, so that we're not just doing nothing. Uh, trying to have, have something and, you know, it, it may turn into something bigger as we go along, but if, if you never do anything, you're never gonna do anything.
Right, right.
It's, it's, they're in the, they're in the process of doing that too, so, and I'm sure it'll, it'll happen.
Please get something to Doris so we can put it on the city website.
All right.
On our web, webpage, on the banner.
And I think the chambers.
Ms. Dorothy, you wanna say something else?
Yeah, cuz this was a project I had wanted to do several years ago. We got canceled, so I'm thrilled. But what we're gonna do, cuz we wanted Santa, we didn't want the children to lose Santa in Bastrop during the night. Santa, Mr. and Mrs. Santa will be at the end of this route as they're driving through. And we'll be waving to all the children and handing out little bags already, a candy already placed for bags. We're doing everything we can to try to minimize COVID and, and the touch.
I have one more question. Is, is the group accepting donations or?
Oh, yeah. I mean, which all, all, all these donations are going towards the toy drive that the, that the fire department puts on every year.
So, so Pastor Joey or, or Ms. Deborah Ford, uh, how can people give now? Um, I know the Bastrop Fire Department can, are we gonna do any special thing like?
Yeah, the, the one sponsor that we have, we're, we're funneling everything through Keep More House Beautiful.
Okay.
Checks can be made payable to Keep More House Beautiful. More House Beautiful will write, will, will write one check to the fire department for whatever is collected.
Okay, great.
We'll be sure to help promote it on the Chambers Facebook page and everywhere else. It'll get out of work and I hope that's.
Yes. Thank you all for all you do. Bastrop is a great place to live and it's great because of its people.
And I didn't grow up on Puff Ditch, but I grew up on Bowman Street, which was right there. So I had a lot of friends on, uh, Commerce. I had a lot of friends down there. But I think that's a great idea. All right.
Thank you so much, Pastor.
Thank y'all for what y'all do.
Thank you. God bless. Keepers, any prayers?
Yes, sir.
Number eleven. Resolution twenty dash nineteen twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to make application, execute an agreement through capital outlay for funding through, um, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty twenty-one to twenty-two to replace the roof at City Hall. We've had that application for eight or ten years, right, Ms. Goldman? Yeah, and last year, last year, it was reported that we made the cut, that we made it, and we're trying to find out exactly what happened to that because the governor showed it to me on his spreadsheet and said we had it, three hundred eighty thousand dollars. So I gotta find out what happened now. Um, but we are making application again, but we need your authorization, counsel. Moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Shaw. Any discussion? Item eleven. DeeDee, all, all in favor? Okay, all, all the folks, okay. The eyes have it. Uh, twelve is another one, another resolution. Twenty, that's nineteen twenty-six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to make application, execute an agreement through capital outlay for funding through fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two to replace the roof at the driver's license building. We, the roof at the driver's license building's been bad for years, years and years. I had a meeting with, um, a contractor that we had gotten to, to patch it. Ms. Goldman, I believe he came to you and gave you the bad news. And it was too bad to patch even. The, we had the fire truck, uh, uh, come over and extend the ladder up there because I wanted to take a look at it. We got sighted for a leak into where the driver's license place is by, uh, Fire, State Fire Marshal. One of our former guys did the fight sighting and, uh, when I saw his name on there, I was wondering, uh, I was wondering, um, I was just teasing, of course, but, but we got to do something. The reason that we hadn't acted on that building is because, is because for some time, we've been talking about doing a swap for that building and tearing it down, uh, because of the complex that was gonna be built there. Ms. Katie Purnell, and you, you all did approve selling, I think a half acre or something like that. Yeah, but she bought some other property adjacent, so she doesn't need to go through with that, but we, well, she gonna build a building, but she bought the property to the south. You know, that when you're going from here to the building, right there on the right, you got a couple of. Yeah, to the south. And, uh, so she doesn't need us to go through that. But we were trying to work a deal with Kay King. Is Kay back there? Kay was trying to orchestrate something where we could get another building that was worth at, at least equivalent to that, correct, Kay? Yeah, and, uh, so that we could have a grand, a grand, um, uh, facility there for community care. That's, that's gonna probably apply, uh, hire at least thirty more people or so. So we were gonna swap. We tried to work that out. Kay tried and, uh, it was going really good for a good while, right, Kay? Until it didn't. And the deal fell through and there we were stuck with the building and had not applied. But I contacted, uh, State Senator Katrina Jackson, if you're listening, and State Representative Fred Jones, if you're listening. I also contacted Stuart Cathy, Michael Echols, and I'm contacting, um, Francis Thompson and every other senator, north, you know, northeast Louisiana senator and representative to, to try to get their support because I feel that, that we really got the City Hall one last year, I believe, but something happened in the process that, that, uh. So I'm, I'm trying to ask the governor to do what's right and fair and as legislators to do what's right and fair by us and, and help us with both of these roofs. So what's your pleasure on this one? Motion made by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Green. Any discussion question? All in favor? The eyes have it. The resolution is passed. Appoint a member to the zoning adjustment board. I've selected Willie Bear Nelson. He had expressed an interest in wanting to serve. So that's who I'm tendering before you to the zoning adjustment board. That's when someone goes before the zoning board and if they wanna appeal the, the decision of zoning board, they go to the adjustment board before coming to you all. Okay? Okay, motion made by Council Lady Moore, seconded by Councilman Locke, that Mr. Willie Bear Nelson be appointed. Any questions? All, discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Nelson's appointed. Liquor license, Assistant Chief, uh, Anthony Evans. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. We have, uh, seven alcohol license renewals, Class A on all of them. Porter House Liquor, North Washington, Sissy's U-Pac, Packard, East Madison, Stop and Save, South Washington, Supermark Two, North Washington, Stop For You Incorporated, West Madison, Walgreens, East Madison, Happy Stop on North Washington. They're all just renewals from last year.
What's your recommendation, Chief?
To accept the renewal. And then we have one new liquor license. It's a restaurant liquor license for Nick's Bar and Grill in the Old Magnolia Shopping Center.
And that's a sports bar, is that correct, basically?
I, I guess that's what you would call it.
Was that D? Nick, yeah, right, yeah.
And then we recommend to accept that also.
Okay. What's your pleasure, counsel? Motion made by Council Lady Moore, seconded by Councilman Shaw. Any discussion? All in favor? The license are granted. Thank you, Chief. Uh, recognizing of the Dots and Free Riders, uh, I had put that off. Uh, we have a Dots and Free Rider baseball team. I think they're in the, the newspaper today on the front page of the Enterprise. They've been winning tournament after tournament, right, DeeDee? They gotta do what? Yeah, we don't have the, we don't. They won tournaments in, uh, Longview, Texas, Lafayette, Pineville. Um, they just won Vicksburg. They did two tournaments, I believe, in Vicksburg. And they are, love baseball. They just need fields to play on. So I wanted to recognize, uh, Jesse DeValle is their coach and he wears, and Ca- well, Carolyn, Carolyn keeps all the statistics and stuff. She travels with them and, and these people travel everywhere. And these, these guys, I wanted to recognize them because they're ambassadors for Bastrop. And we'll do that hopefully at the next council meeting. Okay. Uh, item sixteen. Y'all laughing at it, but what you're doing is you're really slapping these young men in the face because they have no quality fields to play on. In my opinion. It's my opinion. It's my opinion. It's my opinion. Just my opinion. Okay. No, go ahead. I'm not gonna keep you here tonight. That's fine. So it fails for a lack of emotion. Okay. Is that clear? Right? It'll be on next time. Okay. Because, let me tell you why. You all think it's funny. You think it's funny, but we, we have, we have so many metric tons of debris to burn. It's gonna take our people, it's gonna take crews burning debris, crews on potholes, crews on, uh, cemeteries, crews on, um, on, on blight. We made application to DEQ for, for other things that, that, uh, that if you ask me, if you call me, I'll tell you what those are. Dealing with blight, but we don't, you can call me, right? We can walk together and talk about it now, DeeDee. But we need this laser grader in the worst sort of way because we can bring some of those tournaments here. The West Washataw, West Washataw was on the news two days ago. They're asking for like fourteen million dollars to do, uh, every other community is addressing this, except our community. And we need to address and get some quality fields so that we can get people to come play. We're trying, we have a person who's gonna do maintenance. We're gonna go through the park and paint and clean and replace and stuff, but we need the fields done. And I'm also asking this counsel to think about those tennis courts. We need for you, I need for you all to appropriate money for our tennis courts to turn them into pickleball and tennis and, you can shake your head, but this is what brings people to town and brings people, make people wanna come to our parks. And. Yeah, we are, DeeDee. We're gonna put them up. We're, we're looking at, well, COVID hit one hundred forty-four thousand yesterday. These kids are not careful. They're going to clubs and they're packing, packing in clubs and they're going back and killing the old folks. Mr. Green, I'm looking at what COVID is gonna do this, this, this fall. Someone needs to care for old people who got medicines and pre-existing conditions. And I'm not so, so quick to pull the trigger on giving people an opportunity to congregate when they will not cover and they will not social distance. Young people, you know, I have trouble with my young people that go out. My grandsons. And, uh, I take, I got, I got a temperature gauge. I take their temperature. I put it right on their forehead. And if I don't see ninety, Ms. 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 Uh, Ms. Moore understands that. It's serious, isn't it, Ms.? Yes. And, and Ms. Moore, you know what to do for it. I mean, you, you're a nurse and you, you understand. I want, Larry, DeeDee wants COVID, so Ms., he can take advice from Ms. Moore. Yeah. Okay, all right. Yes, uh, we need to expand it. We have to, Ms. Ms. Goldman. Can you tell why we need to do Resolution twenty dash nineteen?
Two resolutions. We found out late Monday that we need this so we can do, when they audit us for the next week to ten days on our Brando Stewart project, we have to have these done.
So we don't wanna pay back six hundred and ninety thousand dollars? Will you make that motion, please, Mr. Locke? Okay? Okay, and we have to have, and if we don't get this, we stand, we'll be in violation. Okay, go ahead. Okay? I just wanted, because we have to have unanimous, I wanted everyone to understand, Mr. Locke, that we have to have. All in favor? Okay. Who made, who's second? Who's second? Mr. Moore? Okay. Moved by Mr. Locke, seconded by Ms. Moore. Okay, all in favor? Okay, so now, thank you, Mr. Locke. Uh, Resolution twenty dash, uh, nineteen twenty-seven, adopting a procurement policy to serve as a guideline. As guidelines for the procurement of supplies, equipment, construction services and professional services for the LCDBG. Um, that's the Louisiana Community Development Block Grant Program as established in twenty-four CFR eighty-five dot thirty-six and state requirements. We need a, yeah. Okay, motions made by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Shaw. Uh, in discussion, all in favor? It passes. The resolution passes. Resolution twenty dash nineteen twenty-eight. The city of Bastrop, Louisiana will dedicate the month of April for each year as Fair Housing Month for the National Fair Housing Law Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight as amended.
The reason why we're doing this, in the month of April, we were shut down and we did not do it. And they want us to commit that the month of April from now on, we will do that. And it's just making sure that our citizens has, uh, adequate housing. That will be a annual thing that we just always did.
Okay. Moved by Council Lady Moore, seconded by Councilman Locke. Um, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the eyes have it. Resolution twenty dash nineteen twenty-nine, a resolution of the mayor and board of all of them for the city of Bastrop, Louisiana to authorize the execution. execution of a lease agreement with the new Singular Wireless PC, PSC LLC, a subsidiary of AT&amp;T for the property adjacent to the Bastrop Municipal Center. Um, this is for a tower, a first, the AT&amp;T Tower, same one we've been doing, Mr. Locke. Um, and, uh, you're just authorizing me to sign, is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
That is correct.
That's all, just authorizing signature, formal authorization. It's been moved by Councilman Locke, second by Councilman Prater. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? The eyes have it. Can we get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Council, moved by Councilman Locke, second, second by, second by Councilman Shaw. Any discussion? All in...